Start our prayer, we're gonna have Dr. Hale to give us our prayer. As well as we're gonna have Councilman Crone to give us our pledge for you all saying.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, our God, our King, we come to you right now. We come to you right now first just saying that we want to repent of our sins for none of us in the room have been perfect, oh Father God. But thank you in your divine providence that you can take an imperfect group of people and then bring them together as a team that they may move forward and make wins together. So Father God, bring our city together, oh Father God, bring our council together, bring our citizens together, oh Father God. For if the prayer's never been sent up, let this prayer go up before you, oh Father God. For we see the news each and every day, oh Father. So touch our city right now that we want to become little Memphis, oh Father, that we may become the great West Memphis, an example in the state of Arkansas, oh Father God. That the people over in Tennessee can see that we can come together and we can make it happen. Father, thank you for the wins that you've given us and the new businesses that are coming, oh Father. Thank you for just allowing us to be just a little bit better of a community. Touch our mayor right now, oh Father God, give him the wisdom, oh Father, to lead our city. For touch each and every last one of our council members right now that they may do the best that they can do, oh Father God. And then, oh Father God, let this city be yours and not the world, oh Father, that we may go forward into you, we pray. Amen.
Let's remain standing and face the flag, please. The pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and you may be seated.
We're gonna call this meeting to order. We're gonna ask the clerk what she called the row, please.
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
Senior Treasurer Suda Junior. Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Katz. Councilor Crone.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Holt. Councilor Hutchinson. Councilor Mohammed. Councilor Monday. Councilor Murray.
Here.
Councilor Wemish.
We have nine attendants present, actually I talked with Councilman Kat, he's out at his niece's funeral. You all seem to be opening for West Memphis Utilities Repair and Painting of the East Barn and Worthington Park Water Tower. Can I get a motion in a second to repair them back?
So moved.
Second. All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. Also, can I get a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. All the paper, aye? Opposed? We had no old business, we have one item of new business, I'm gonna ask Ms. Mohammed, will she read that title?
Yes, sir. I'd like for O1 to be read by title only. I make a motion that it be read by title only.
Make it a second?
Second.
All the paper, aye? Opposed?
This first reading of an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the repair of the Rich Road Bridge declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion in a second to suspend the rules and place it on a second reading?
Second.
All the paper, aye? Opposed?
Second reading of an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the repair of the Rich Road Bridge declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Hearing that read for the second time, can I get a motion in a second to put suspend the rules and place it on the third reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All the paper, aye? Opposed?
This is the third reading of an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the repair of the Rich Road Bridge declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Hearing that read for the third in the final time, can I get a motion in a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Rich, you all got that motion in a second? End of discussion?
Andy, can we get Mr. Wemish, Ward Wemish back up?
You don't want me to do it?
Or you wanna do it?
Well, sure.
I was just gonna get him up here to explain. Okay, Ms. Stanrich would come up to explain to the public what's going on because...
He's been talking with us, we were going to use federal funds in order to replace the Rich Road Bridge. It seems like every time we turned around, there was some kind of roadblock that we would hit that would take weeks and weeks to fix, even though we would try to push it through. But you can only, you know, when it's not in your own hands, you can't really push something through. So Ward had Chris Hill look at it, gave him a bid to repair the bridge. So instead of the bridge most likely getting finished in 26, because it probably wouldn't even start construction until 25, this would allow the bridge to be open, he said, by April of 24, 25. Yeah, sorry. But it's just a year earlier than doing it the other way. And we're going to try to get those federal funds that were being used on the bridge reallocated to another project in the city.
Also, now, my turn. I wanna give you all some amount of money time so you all can know that this was not the city of West Memphis. It took two years for Hall construction, who has absolutely anything to do with the city, to design this bridge. That's two years. Plus, it took six months to get the East, whether the East or we had two homeowners, their time came good. We had a local company here guarantee loan, they moved pretty good. But with Walmart, the company that you would have thought that would have moved faster than anyone, that was the one that took all the time. We had the utility lines that we had to look at, we had to get a permit for the only thing that we already do. As well as then a gas line came in at the end, that was a possibility, then we had to be in it. So if we would have done it like Ms. Runde has said, probably 2026, before the bridge even get started on. So the city of West Memphis said, in the best interest of the people of West Memphis and the time to save it, we are going to pay for this bridge and get this bridge fixed, but it's one bridge to get you to Walmart when there's two other ways to get to Walmart. We're gonna fix it for the people of West, for some of the people of West Memphis.
Well, I am just excited that we're getting this bridge fixed and replaced.
I think everybody will be, but this is a good way. And in the long run, between the work at Rich and the work needed out on South Loop, this is actually an economical way. It seems like a lot for this ordinance, but it will end up saving us in the long run on South Loop. So, because we kind of looked at all these numbers, so it's a good thing.
So have we chosen the design engineer or to watch over this construction so that it is in compatibility?
Yes, Ward mentioned that it was Pickering, Mike Foster. And he is originally, he's a West Memphian, he's very responsive anytime the city reaches out on anything. So it's a good firm.
This project is 1.5, 1.2 is actually to do design and everything, the other 300,000 or so is to pay back the state for designs and things that they have previously done. Now, we out here, I think, I hope that we all wanna get this fixed where we can stop using this as an issue to go back and forth, but how we can work to make our city better by getting it completed. So, Ms. City Clerk, will you individually call that row?
Councilor Bruce.
Yes.
Councilor Katz. Councilor Crone.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Holt.
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson. Councilor Mohammed. Councilor Monday. Councilor Murray. Councilor Wemish.
Yes.
You didn't call me. Councilman McClendon. Hell, yes. Also, now, Councilman Crone. Will you do me the favor, tell us, put this on the emergency clause? I hold, you gonna second it, Councilor Holt, Councilman Crone?
On the bridge?
Yeah, on the bridge, to get this done.
I thought it was already part of the...
You have to adopt it separately.
Yes. So, ho, 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 Councilor Holt, Councilman Crone.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Wait, wait, wait. I've got it. The bridge is gonna be fixed and we are very happy and we have been persistent in this to finally get him done. Thank you.
That wasn't the emergency clause.
Thank you. Now, read the reverse of the clause, Councilman Crone.
A motion to pass the emergency clause...
Paragraph two.
What?
Paragraph two.
Paragraph two, I don't even know where...
Let the record reflect, Councilman Crone made the motion to approve this emergency clause. Can I get the second? Can I get a second, Councilor Holt? We got a second, Councilor Holt, all the paper, aye? Opposed? It's done.
Can I say, can I say one thing? It's unfortunate that, in my opinion, that we were doing it, but I'm glad we're doing it. But if things would have worked out through RDOT, we would have not been at 1 point, Mayor, 1 point what, 2 million?
We had a 1.5 million.
Yes, we'd had to pay 20% of it. But now we're gonna be paying the 1 point.
But I want you to think about this.
But it's grant, it's grant money.
But also, done, get this clear, that money that we were using, even though we paying for this, but actually we get credit on another one, another project that we doing to RDOT. So if not, we just spending out 1.5, it's also going to another project.
That's gonna go towards South Loop.
Yeah, know what I'm saying?
That's what's running this state.
I didn't wanna say it, but you said it, but it's South Loop, so, okay.
We've had two things this week that's happened, it's really been a lot of our work. As Tilden Rogers Park is ready, is going, and the bridge is gonna be fixed. Now, we've done a lot of work this week, right?
Yes, we have.
So we ought to celebrate it.
Thank you. All right. I'm happy, smile on my face. Permission request for the mayor to purchase a property at the corner of Broadway and H Street for the $35,000? Motion in second to approve? Second. Who was first?
I was gonna ask a question if we could explain that to the public.
Well, actually, that's fine, that's fine. What it is, is we have talked back in the past, we were trying to do some monuments for our musical artists. H Street has always been a historical monument for the city of West Memphis. That property was available, and right now we have got with Ms. Fran, it's well to do a mural on the side of her building. And we wanted to do some type of monument within that lane right down the corner of H Street to showcase our musical history, whether it's K-WIM radio station, or the artists that performed here from Shirley Brown, which you obviously on the 17th, to Johnny Taylor, Sonny Paul Williams, I'm sorry, Junior Way, just all the great artists, Highland Wolf, the Caitlin Carr. Yeah, but just all the great artists, and we wanted to do a monument on that piece of lane.
What kind of monument will it be, is it gonna be a building there?
No, it's not gonna be a building, it's gonna be an H Street monument, and then they have some of the sale like when, what we call them things? Sale, yeah, them sales, like where people can go sit up under there and learn and read about our history, our musical history.
Is this gonna be part of Main Street?
Yeah, Main Street.
Mr. Raymond Whiteside in here?
Yeah.
Inspector.
Raymond, would you like to come up and say a few words?
I think this is a great idea, I think it's something that could really activate that area. Right now, it's just a vacant piece of property, but with a mural going up and we're envisioning some awning, some awning, some structure for shade. We've got some benches that we can already kind of sitting in storage that we can put out there, possibly play some type of music if we can, there's outdoor Bluetooth speakers. We've got a lot of ideas for this property as a way to activate our downtown area.
It's gotta be like a little park.
Yes, ma'am, a musical heritage park is what we're envisioning.
That sounds a little bit more reasonable, a musical heritage park, that sounds pretty good.
Did we have plans, I mean, the mayor and I were talking earlier about, we intended to do this a few years ago. Do you have plans on what it's gonna look like and all that good stuff?
I'm currently working on the mural. It's gonna consist of, if you've seen the new banners up on Broadway, basically those images, maybe plus a few more logos of K-WIM, things like that. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We had a motion in a second, all the paper, aye? Opposed? It passed.
Can you make it?
Yes, I make a motion.
All right. Community reports, like I say, the audit, the opera funds, all that would be on the resolution that the next meeting. Oh, you wanna? Okay, sure, I need a motion to add the audit and the opera funds to the agenda. All the paper, aye? Opposed? All right, with the opera funds, well, we'll start with the audit. We know that this time we had another audit with zero material findings. And we all went through that at our last meeting we just had this past Thursday. Having anyone have any questions and concerns about that before you all accept it?
Make a motion, will we approve the audit?
Give a second? All the paper, aye? Opposed? All right. And then our opera funds, Ms. Sura, can you go through that for us?
Sure, so it's gonna be a resolution form at the next meeting, but what's needed is we're gonna reallocate 2 million that originally went to the mega site. So a billion will be for the South Lane Drive main extension, that the utility will be doing. 250, 250,000 goes towards a matching grant for a grant that the Wayne Rose guy is for Command Center. 350,000 is for future transportation for the city of West Memphis. And the additional 400,000 is to go towards the excess funds we will need for still the market project. It will be a resolution form at the next meeting, but I just wanted to put that out there so you all would know what it is before you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Raymond, I should have kept you up here, but can you give the council the good news, another grant that you have never received for the city of West Memphis?
If it pleases the council, I'll go ahead and do my Main Street report. I believe you got this in your packet, but it talks about the grant we just received from RDOT. I'll give you a second to find it. Basically, it's for $153,000. We partnered with Kimley Horn Engineers, it looks like this, out of Memphis. We've had a lot of pedestrian accidents and deaths along Broadway, and we're trying to do something about it. You know, we've got the South Loop project, but we're trying to add evidence and data to our portfolio as reasons for anything. But this is gonna, this money will fund two things, a vulnerable road user safety assessment, basically a pedestrian bicyclist safety assessment, a study, and then also a pedestrian master plan, which should give us some type of idea of solutions, resolutions for the... We've had eight or nine fatalities on Broadway in the past six years. Again, that's eight or nine fatalities on Broadway in just six years. Some of those solutions could be reducing the speed limit, more crosswalks, better lighting, better signage, you know, the flashing caution, pedestrian, high traffic, something like that. But that's what the master plan should yield. But we were one of 52 communities, I think, that were selected for this grant. Any questions about that grant? Also on my report at the bottom, we're working on this Delta Domino tournament. We're really excited about it, Jim and I have been talking about it, and we partnered with both Boys and Girls Clubs. We wanna turn it into a fundraiser. We'd like to have it at the Civic Center, but because it's under renovation or will be, we're gonna be having it at the Boys and Girls Club on Missouri Street. But the proceeds will be split between both Boys and Girls Club. And it's gonna be held in March, the date is still to be determined. But everybody we've talked to seems really excited about it, it seems like everybody plays dominoes. So I wanna kind of turn to y'all for a second to please, you know, start spreading the word. After Christmas especially, we're gonna start promoting it. But it's basically a fundraiser for both Boys and Girls Clubs, there's gonna be doubles, singles, and a youth division, that's what we're hoping for. And there's gonna be prize money, we don't know how much yet, we don't know how we can go, but it'll be, you know, well worth playing, should be exciting. And we're hoping, you know, with being at the Worthington Boys and Girls Club there, with their bleachers, you can kind of come in, have popcorn drinks, and watch the action. It can also be like a community event, that's what we wanna turn it into.
That's why I said I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you say both Boys and Girls Club, we have two boys' clubs and two girls' clubs, so you talking about all four?
We have been talking about the Wonder City Boys and Girls Club and the one at Worthington, those two. Yeah.
It'll be split between those two.
Correct, sorry, not all four, the two. Sorry about that, yeah.
Does this have, if somebody wins this tournament, do they have like a national tournament?
Well, I like the way you think. There is one in Alabama, it's in...
You're about the only one, but go ahead.
It's in June or July, and we're hoping to maybe find a circuit, find our way onto a circuit, and really make this a regional thing and grow it over the years. Yes, sir.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Police?
There's some stuff on the back, I think it was two-sided. But the water tower, and y'all can read on, Christmas lights and stuff, but the water tower got a facelift.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What's y'all gonna do with them bikes that people can't ride?
They're staying there for now, they probably need to touch up the paint, but you got an idea for them? Remove them?
Thank you. Police?
Okay, police, Chief Presley.
I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna add that in a minute.
Well, only thing he gave us was an update from last month. The 911 station should be up and going by January 1, we are hoping so anyway. And they will achieve another grant to buy two off-road vehicles to assess areas that our normal units cannot. And I think that was pretty much it. And he'll give us the...
Far?
Okay, there's something in your packet, but I gave this information to the council on the last council meeting.
A and P? A and P? We did meet on Monday, November the 20, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:03 PM by Chairman Scott Ferguson. The minutes were presented and accepted, financial reports presented and accepted. Old business, Civic Center renovation update, Jim Jackson reported that A and P is in contract with Wadener Contractors, Inc. And are currently doing the background work, background work, and should start physical work around the first of the year. Civic Center renaming was tabled to the next meeting, next month's meeting. Transfer to General Parks Fund, a cap of 512,500. It was on a percentage basis, now it's just gonna be a cap of 512,000 dollars. New business, Jim Jackson presented the commission with a resolution from Buc-E's Corporation that authorizes the executive director, Jim Jackson, to sign all necessary paperwork pertaining to Buc-E's agreement on behalf of West Memphis Advertising and Promotions Commission. Motion passed unanimously. Announcement, Jim Jackson made the following announcements, annual tree lighting, November the 26, 2024, has already happened. Winter Festival, December the 13th and 14th, 2024. The new welcome sign has been installed in front of Walgreens on Missouri Street. Ads are currently running about the Christmas lighting contest that's by Ward, and the Christmas parade will be here at, held December the 3rd, and it has already happened. End of report.
All right. Thank you. Also, the one... It's the Wonderland Festival that's coming up on the 13th and the 14th. Across, that we wanted to make the people aware that that for the ice skating and riding the bumper car, different things like that would be the 13th and the 14th today. At the Eugene, with Civic Center Park Lot. Also, the parks, we had our groundbreaking for Tilden Rogers Park yesterday, we finally got that park going. We've been excited about all the amenities that they're gonna give, the fields, the turf fields, the splash pads, the basketball, volleyball, pickleball, course and different thing, new restrooms, new concession stands, and the whole nine yards. So we broke ground on that yesterday, I'm sorry, everyone, yesterday, it was Tuesday, was it Tuesday? Tuesday, so we broke ground on it, so we was able to get all the, I think, all the council people that was able to make it. Everyone was very excited about, so I just think that's a great job, and they already working right now, they already turning down fences and different things like that. So it's gonna be a lot they're gonna go with that. I think that's all the community to admit. Let me get a motion in a second to add the five appointees that the council members that you all have, we can go add them together.
So moved.
Can I say? All the paper, aye? Opposed? All right, the person who I'm gonna go with is because they gave me their resume first, and matter of fact, they gave the Councilman Kat, and he gave it to me. And that was Dr. Afida Robinson. She is the one that he recommended to me, and that's the one who gave it to me first. Now, I do support both candidates, Ms. Karen Jackson is where, I'm gonna go back, who gave it to me first? So I'm gonna ask that you all approve the first five, and Dr. Robinson.
Mayor, can we? Unless, and I'm not sure if there was a time for the others to get their resumes to the council or not.
Well, I know the other five, Dr. Holmes and Dana Parker, Everett, Ms. Brown.
No, I'm talking about for the at-large positions.
Yeah, we just doing one, they still, we'll come back in two weeks and we'll have...
So who are you recommending?
I'm recommending Dr. Robinson.
Okay, all right. That was my question, yeah, okay.
But in two weeks, I'm also gonna make sure Ms. Jackson in, you know, but you all gonna have the other people too, so... Can I get a motion in second to approve them? So moved.
Second.
All the paper, aye? Opposed? It's approved. Also, I had no presentations, no announcement, I got some announcements I need to go through real quick. First of all, if you all looking at y'all there, you all have five of these... You have five of the holiday gift baskets, what I have done, I gave each one, you all five. And I'm asking you all to find someone that really needs these baskets. And what I mean by really need these baskets, honestly, I can go get one to my mom, but I can afford to buy my mom a turkey. So I'm asking you all, find the people who really needs the basket, not just give it to people that we know. You know, I have seen for the last couple of years, people that come through, and Mercedes Benz, getting a turkey, and then a person that don't have nothing, that have a ticket, they say, well, we can't give you nothing because you didn't have a ticket, no, I just think that was so unfair. So I'm just asking these, you all, the city, please give it to someone that really needs to help, single parent mothers or families that really need to support, help them with that.
Single-parent mothers of, or families that really need to support, help them with that. And I'm asking the council people to do that. Also, I'm asking the council pieces, people to do one thing to me. We are really working hard on this Wonder City Wonderland contest. And we actually doing this in each one of you all's ward. So encourage the people within the wards to, to come up and feel it out with, with come to the city or go to the cityofwestmemphis.gov. And fill out an application, 'cause they may have the opportunity to win a thousand dollars first prize or five hundred second prize. So it's not just all over the city. I mean, for War One, they gonna have their two people. War Two gonna have their two people. War Three gonna have their two. War Four gonna have their two, and War Five is gonna have their two. So there's gonna be ten winners. So just encourage them to get more involved in this, you know, to make our city, our city is looking great. It is looking beautiful. And I want them to be involved with it. Also, something we did as well today, I had a meeting today, and I think it was a great meeting. Some of you all gonna get some phone calls. I'm not gonna say I don't care, but I, I, I really want you all to stand with me on this. This right here, I said I'm gonna make some noise, and I hear enough cries, and we're gonna make this noise. This is Operation Pull Back, Take Pride. These are the blue dumpsters that the council had bought a couple of years ago to make sure that we got trash that we can come and pick up without one, one armload. If we gonna pick them up on time, it don't take no time for you to walk out to your street and pull that thing back to your house. So every day, starting today, I talk with the police department. I had my police chief, my assistant chief, my captain, and several of his officers in the room. We probably had about four or five in there, along with our inspectors in there. They went out today. If you live in War One, War Two, and War Three. You got a warning ticket on your garbage can right now. Tomorrow, they're gonna be in War Four. If your garbage is not pulled back, you will have a warning ticket in War Five. Certainly, they're gonna have a warning ticket in War Five. So they out doing, that, that's their job today. Have to make sure they put fines on it. Not fine, these only warning. So it's not, it's not a fine this time. Not this time. But after today, you'll be fined a hundred dollars, and you'll be going to court for it. So you all said y'all wanted it. I know, uh, Councilwoman Muhammad has worked very hard in keeping West Memphis, uh, keep West Memphis beautiful. The other young women came out to the council meeting, the last council meeting. Ms. Bois. I heard them. Now, we not having just code enforcement. We have the police that are out there right now. The, uh, pennies are warnings. I'm hoping that everyone take heed to it now, 'cause it's a warning right now, but the next thing would be a fine. We good with that?
I, I would only like to say this one thing, in, in all fairness to the, uh, community, there is a timeline in which they are supposed to have them back. A lot of people, when their, their cans, I don't know exactly what time the police officers are going to be putting the warning tickets on there. But we know a lot of people do not get off work until five or after, and I think that, that time is at least by seven thirty.
But actually, what we doing, we are going a whole nother day that's behind, like War One, it shouldn't be no, no, no trash cans in War One or War Two.
By the next morning.
By the next morning. Today is Thursday, so them, them should already been pulled up, and right now, by this evening, War Three should have theirs up as well. And like I said, we not giving the ticket on, on this one. We wanna let people know that this is a new year, what we bringing to our city, and how we gonna keep it clean, and we need you all to help us. 'Cause I don't think we need to waste time, well, pin tickets on garbage can, but if you ain't gonna do it, I have no the trust, but the enforcement to make sure we get it done.
And then one other thing I would like to say to that is, most people feel if the cans are not sitting directly on the sidewalk for just abutting it, that they're in the clear. Please explain.
What, what I did, I told my police department to pull all the dumpsters back to the, the, the house, adjacent to the house or on the side of the house. Only thing what we doing, if the dumpsters are out toward the street or on the sidewalk or stuck in the public right of way, that we are going to give them their ticket. Not the ticket, this fine the first time, not the fine, I'm sorry, this warning. Hopefully, that they take heed, and then the next, next week or so, then it won't be an issue. And also, uh, Bob has, uh, getting ready to put twelve thousand letters and, uh, um, life bill. So everyone knows that you need to pull these dumpsters back. So like I said, they have some time, and like I said, they just wanted, just a little know that we are doing it. But we want the police, so the police is out there doing it now, so.
Please give me respite. My yard is torn up. I'm having dry waste for it. I don't know if I can get mine back tomorrow evening.
Mayor, can I add one thing to this? Uh, and it has to do with a request from some citizens over in War Three that were asking. During the holiday season, when you set your holiday policies on picking up trash. Could you print it on the back of the utility bill? So that they know what the different schedule is. I know we put it on our website. I know we post it on Facebook, but there's still a number of people that, that evidently don't know when to put the trash out when it comes to a holiday.
So you're asking to just put another insert in the utility bill that has the holiday trash collection schedule? Um, provided that we, yeah, we should be able to do that, 'cause the utility bills will go out toward the, the middle of this month. So we should be able to do that, no problem.
That'll work.
Mayor? I just got a text, and the question is, what about the aged and disabled who can't pull the trash cans back?
That's a great question. Uh, what we have tried to do, and like I said, it's, it's gonna take a lot of notification from the council. You know, right now, if you can't pull your trash out to the side, we have the sanitation, when they come pick it up, they would do it for you. So our goal is to make sure that if we can do it by, uh, Facebook or possibly internet to our life bills or any other way, we can kind of promote that. Uh, they can call the, uh, the sanitation department, and they'll come and actually in the yard and, and pull the trash up, empty it, and take it back. So if it's someone like that. And like I said, this time, this is only a, um, a warning. And hopefully, if someone in that condition gets, to get that warning, they'll be able to call that number. Call, uh, up here or the sanitation, we can get them on the list to make sure that, uh, they can have someone to pull their trash and bring it back.
Yeah, it's, this lane, this lane.
We're helping the sanitation department because we have the post's machine.
Okay.
And we have the application, and if they call city clerk's office, we will put the application in the mail to them, and then they return the sanitation department.
Okay, that's cool. Alright.
Thank you, that's why I was glad to get this play.
And I would like to give a shout out to, uh, the sanitation department and Mr. Montgomery. They are really doing a fantastic job. If they know that you regularly pull your cans to the road, and it's not there on that regular pickup day. He has basically instructed his men, something must be wrong at that household today, so just go ahead and get it and put it back. So I think that's very honorable, and I just wanted to make mention of that, of that department.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is there any way we can label, uh, the disabled, uh?
Well, we, if.
Disabled could put a tag on their can.
Well, if, if they just do the application, we would know. So it wouldn't be a thing where we have to label. And the reason why I wouldn't want to label, because when you start pin labels on kids, then you know that someone in that household or that person is disla, disabled, and someone try to break in on them or do anything on them. So if they just do that, or even Ms. Harris, if you can help them with the application, then we'll make sure they get in. We'll, we'll get them taken care of. Also, I'm gonna ask this too. You all know, we got a lot of potential restaurants that's getting ready to come to the city. We got some that's getting ready to open. Someone gonna keep their mouth closed, ain't gonna send them the bow. But I'm asking for a spirit, a, a spirit of excellence and hospitality. And what I mean by that, sometimes you go to these restaurants, and you are treated the worst place in the world. I just hate some of the service that we're gonna get from our restaurant. And to make our city better, we just need some better service. Uh, Bucky's told me that they don't pay twenty dollars, twenty dollars an hour for a person to be able to sweep the floor. Because they can teach you how to sweep the floor. They pay twenty dollars an hour for you to know how to treat the people that comes in there to keep them making the money that they need to make to keep their business running. And that's the mentality that so many of our other restaurants are doing. Chick-fil-A does a great job, but, but we got some in here that, hey, I wanna go back and ask for a refund. And now we got some new restaurants that I cannot say publicly, 'cause I know we on air, that we need to make sure that we set a standard, set a standard for our community.
Mayor, I have one other thing too. Uh, I'm thankful for what we're doing about the trash. But we need to make sure we, uh, continue to check on these vehicles in the city, throughout the city, that, that, uh, basically give us a bad look.
We, uh, I, I agree with you one thousand percent. The chief is here. We, the chief and the city chief is here, and the chief is here. We talked about those cars too, so the police department is not only working on the garbage can, we just making a hit today on the garbage can. But, but ill, they walk in the yard, and you got two, uh, cars that's not working, guess what? We gonna throw a sticker on them as well. But right now, the main focus is ill, the garbage can, but while we here, we just, the twenty twenty-five gonna be a new year for us. And that's why I'm saying, we got to be together, because someone come out and start saying, well, the mayor doing this, the mayor just doing this, and they're doing this. I need you all to say, well, hey, we supporting that. We supporting him cleaning up our city, making our city better, so. But they definitely gonna be working that.
And I'm talking about even some of the businesses, uh.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have businesses here in the city that are running junkyards.
Mm-hmm.
And so we, we, we definitely need to try and clean that up. Yes, War Two is, 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 is full of them.
As well as the, the no litter signs. I have not forgotten that. I've had so much sickness in my family the past few months. As I was coming on here, my daughter Candace texted me, she's in the emergency room again right now, and I'm just really not at myself. But I have not forgotten about those do not litter signs, because that's another thing that really plagues our city. Just so much litter being thrown out of people's cars, and they just don't seem to care.
Thank you. Also, the police department has some, uh, old police lights that are on their cars that are no good. They obsolete. They can't use them anymore, and they wanted to just donate them to another police department that's using some of their old vehicles. But it has to come through an approval of the council. Uh, so I wanna first say, uh, can I get a motion in a second to add that to the agenda real quick?
So moved.
Second. All pay by? Oppose? Is it, is it legal for them? Okay, he says legal, so, uh.
I think the statute says you can donate to another police agency. Uh, and there's, it's, I can't remember all the parts of the statute, but that's definitely one of them that says you can donate to other police agencies.
Mayor, I think also the fire department, I think, has some old turnout, is that what it is, that they wanted to donate?
Yeah, we have a, a set of air packs and also an apparatus.
That they wanted to donate, I think. Chief, how many was it?
Just one apparatus. One apparatus and ten air packs.
Okay.
That we're no longer using. Uh, a lot of times what we do is, the less fortunate volunteer department around the rural area, just kind of cussing, just donating to those guys, because they're gonna be ones that's gonna be creating mutual.
Uh, Chief, y'all can talk with me about that. Let me know, 'cause I don't, the police did, and I know where that is going. I don't know where you all is going.
I'm sorry.
Okay, right.
I'm sorry. Okay, uh, can I get a motion in a second to approve the police department?
So moved.
Second. All pay by? Oppose? It passes. Also, I hear something else, but I'm gonna wait on that. Uh, I have nothing. Do you all have anything else before we do that?
Yeah, Mayor, I got.
Bring that back before the council, next council meeting, on the fire, on the.
I'm gonna talk to the fire. I, I got to talk with them about some things.
I may not have heard it, uh, but Pat, did we give the ordinance a number?
No.
That was the only one that we had today on.
Mayor? Our contributions.
Twenty-six eighty-six.
Ordinance number is twenty-six eighty-seven, two-six-eight-seven.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Also, can I get a motion in second to, to add the, uh, Southland Funds, uh, to charity today? Second. Okay. All pay by? Oppose? Okay, uh, one thousand dollars to life empowerment. Anyone else? Anyone else wanna add anything?
Just a point of clarification about the commissioners. So we have one at-large commissioner that we approved and four wards, Ward one through four.
Five, every five ward.
But Ward five, we, we don't have a resume or anything from Ward five, so we haven't, we haven't seen that person, so I don't.
Okay, yeah.
So, so it's, it's the existing commissioners of Ward one through four and the at-large member that the mayor nominated. And then so next meeting, we'll have the other at-large member and we'll approve Ward five.
That'd be fine.
Okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else wanna add charity funds? Here none, well, all pay by? Oppose? Alright, thank you. Can I get a motion in second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All pay by? Oppose?